Good afternoon. My name is Ethan Collier and I chair the Chattanooga County Regional Planning Commission. Welcome to our meeting. Couple of things to go over for those of you who have not attended one of our meetings before. I'll go over them quickly. I recognize a lot of faces, so I'm sure you're familiar with our process. Planning Commission's received this packet in advance of today's meeting. And so at times throughout the meeting, we move really pretty quickly. So make sure to have a copy of the agenda there in front of you and follow along closely so that you know where we're at. What I'll do is I'll read off every case number on our agenda in their current order. And when I do, I'll ask if there's any opposition here. If you're here and you're a person with questions or concerns, or you're actually opposed to what's being requested by the applicant, please make sure to raise your hand so that you can be recognized. And if you wish to speak, especially make sure to raise your hand. What what we'll do is in cases where there's no opposition and we have a staff recommendation to approve, we'll oftentimes take action on those cases without hearing from the applicant or the opposition, because there is none in those cases. And if there is opposition here, or we have a staff recommendation to deny, we'll hear from staff first, then the applicant will be given a total of seven minutes to speak. They'll sit down and then opposition will have a total of nine minutes to speak. And then the applicant will have two minutes to follow up after we've heard from the opposition. We stick really strictly to those times. There's a clock that I see here. I don't know what y'all see on the other side of that clock, but I see the amount of time that's left. And so sometimes we have six or seven or eight, or even 15 or 20 people that want to speak in opposition. The time allotted for opposition is only nine minutes. So from time to time, I do have to interrupt people so that we can make sure to hear from everybody. One thing that's helpful to the Planning Commission is if when you are speaking in opposition, you're telling us something that hasn't already been said. So sometimes somebody will get up and make a statement about some sort of traffic condition. And the next person gets up and says the exact same thing. And the third person gets up and says yet again, the exact same thing. What's most helpful for us is if as people are speaking to us, they're telling us something we haven't already heard. So that we can make some good decisions today. It is also important that when you come up to the mic, you state your name and address for the record. And after we rule on the case, the vast majority of these cases are a recommendation to either the city council or the county commission. So make sure to follow along for those future dates. I think that's everything, Mr. Schultz. Is there anything I missed?
No, you did. But speaking of those dates, there's a handout in the back room. This is for next month, not necessarily associated to Plan Commission, but actions when these cases leave this body, it goes either the city council or county commission. And there's a handout, one page handout in the back, starting effectively now. The city council agenda had been starting at six on the second Tuesday. That's now starting at 3:30. So if you have a case that's going in front of the county commission for June, city council, the June 11th at 3:30. So applicants need to be there at 3:30. There could be a brief recess before that meeting actually starts again for June 11th and carrying forward, you need to be there at 3:30 for the city council. I also have this on the screen. For the cases that go to the county commission in June, which should be June 19th, that's a federal holiday, Juneteenth. So county commission, county commission offices will be closed. So that hearing will be June 12th at 9:30 for the agenda session. And then until the 19th, that will be moved to June 26th at 9:30. There's a handout in the back. It's on, uh, you can be on our website as well. So that's just some updates or meeting dates for, uh, next month. We'll also send letters out to the applicants from our office, just reminding them of those dates and times.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Councilman Lefter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brian, if I may add some context to what's happening at city council. So if you're interested in a case, we start our agenda session at 3:30. So if you are showing up to hear a case on a first read, then that doesn't necessarily mean at 3:35, your case will be heard. What that means is we will start our agenda session as we normally do at 3:30. We go through our agenda session, these special presentations and/or committee meetings. Then we usually take a recess. That recess can be up to 30 minutes, 45 minutes, depending on if we have an attorney-client privilege meeting or something, other business that we need to take care of. Then when we come back from that recess is when we do our order of business. So that's, I want to lay that out for you to kind of understood that if you showed up at 3:30, your case is probably not going to be heard at 3:35. But you need to track that because we have a lot of business to take care of on Tuesdays and we're trying to be as efficient as possible. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Right, with that, we'll jump into the agenda. The first case on our agenda is case SD 2024-0033. This is preliminary plat, Nature Cove subdivision lots 1 through 201 and community lots 186, 203 and 211 and utility lots 202 and 212 located at 8209 Bell Mill Road. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? Thank you. And is the applicant present? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is the subdivision plat that was approved with this body last month. After watching the video recording of last month's meeting, the opposition had a little roughly over eight minutes to speak, not the full allotted nine minutes. There was somebody else here who wished to speak, so we're rehearing this case today.
So does that mean they have 45 seconds? We're gonna start all over.
Start all over.
All right.
Start all over. I'm going to do the same presentation as last month. Nothing's changed.
Fantastic. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah. So this is again a preliminary plat for Nature's Cove. It's lots 1 through 201, uh, community lots 186, 203 through 211, and utility lots 202 and 212. Again, it's a Bell Mill and Utawah community. Uh, you can see on the screen here, the properties highlighted in the purplish blue color, uh, that is the property, Bell Mill to the south, Snow Hill Road to the east. This property does not connect to Snow Hill. It actually connects to Hunter Road via Bell Mill. And you might hear this today, this intersection, uh, Bell Mill and Hunter Road intersection. Uh, that's Bell Mill coming into Hunter Road. Uh, so to hear a little bit about this, just give you a view of that intersection. There's another view looking at this intersection from Bell Mill towards Hunter Road. Uh, this is Bell Mill, uh, just to the top of the picture on the right-hand side. That's Mountain Pass intersection coming into Bell Mill. Uh, the subdivision just beyond to the south and right of this picture. Closer view of Bell Mill and Mountain Pass intersection. Uh, this is looking, uh, Bell Mill towards Snow Hill. Uh, the property's on the left-hand side. Uh, again, another view of Bell Mill, the property's on the left-hand side of this picture. Continuing down Bell Mill, uh, the property's on the left-hand side. Uh, as you see, we do have some flood plain and flood hazard area on this property. The floodways in the, in the lighter blue, if you will, and the flood, uh, plain is in the darker blue. In the floodway, you pretty much have to stay out of the floodway. You can develop in the flood plain, which is the lighter blue, as long as you elevate the structures above base flood elevation. So you can see a portion of this property is in the flood hazard area. Uh, just as a reminder from last month, um, each zone has minimum lot size. Uh, in this case, this being A1, the minimum lot size on public sewers is 7,500 square foot and 60 foot of lot furnished for each lot. Uh, the A1 zone has a maximum density of two dwelling units per acre. Uh, density as calculated or defined in the county zoning regulations is the number of dwelling units per acre. Uh, this density is calculated by dividing the number of dwelling units by the total acres of the project site. Again, this has a total of 212 lots, but if you look at just strictly the residential lots, it's 200 residential lots divided by roughly 100 acres. That's a density of 1.98, so it's below that two units per, uh, maximum in the A1 zone. Here's a, this is a lot of sheets in this development, so I just had this overall view, uh, showing you the proposed layout. The dots in the red are community lots and the yellow dots are the community lots. You can see where they are in relation to this development, because there's so many sheets that are associated with this property. Has two entrances, uh, connecting to Bell Mill, uh, one closer to the, uh, Mountain Pass intersection, one a little further south, uh, towards, um, Bell Mill. I'll skip all these sheets if you want to look at them, we can. But this plat meets the requirements of subdivision regulations in terms of lot size, lot furnished. Each lot has sewer availability, has trench shown. One thing, keep in mind, go back to the overall view, uh, Bell Mill is very substandard in terms of pavement width along Bell Mill. Uh, this developer is widening Bell Mill in front of the property that he owns. Also think the county's taken some steps to improve the intersection of Bell Mill and Hunter, and Hunter Road. So with that being said, staff recommended to approve, uh, this preliminary plat to move forward.
And we've taken action on this previously. Before we did last time, I noted to the opposition that subdivision plat is approved. If that plat meets all the regulations, this plat does currently meet all the regulations and has a staff recommendation to approve. However, we do want to hear from opposition, then we'll hear from the applicant. So if, uh, applicant could come up, say, okay, thank you. Opposition?
And I'll remind you of this kind of put together of the plat where it shows the flood zone, floodway, et cetera. Uh, I'm Gary Bowles, 5812 Mountain Pass Drive in Utawah. Thank you for allowing us our full nine minutes. I believe it was an oversight by the timekeeper. Uh, we'll try to use the time wisely. We were told at the last meeting by the chairman, the developer meets all the subdivision regulations. You have no choice but to approve the plat. However, the regulations, section 303, give three reasons. One is if it, they can deny if the plat doesn't conform to the standards set out in the regulations, which is the one you considered. But the second and third one are approval of the plat would be detrimental to the public safety, health, or general welfare, or approval of the plat would not be in the best interest of the local government. So the chairman was only looking at one aspect of the regulations, the subdivision standards. Then I can only surmise that the other two aspects were not even considered by the RPA staff or this body. The applicants represented stated in July and August of 2023 that we'd see no more than 2.9 homes per acre based on the total acreage, and that would be between 290 and 300 homes. Uh, on, in July of 2023, the number was 292. He later said 296, and that's just a mix-up on numbers. Then in the April 2024 meeting last month, he stated that he had proposed 240 homes and a PUD. That number nor the PUD was never mentioned in any planning or county commission meeting. And of course, the zoning change was withdrawn at the planning commission meeting. This just shows that the number of homes is really of no concern to him, except for the bigger, the better. We're tired of the misinformation from this agent lobbyist of the developer. We see it for what it is. Misinformation is intended to confuse all of us, but that's his way of doing business. So who is responsible for protecting the public safety, health, and general welfare of the, and of the local government? It's our elected officials, namely the mayor and his commissioners. The commissioner for our district, uh, opposed this development from the beginning, as did the chairman of the county commission, whose district borders this one. But that doesn't matter to you. So your overriding of desire seems inappropriate to me since our elected officials are the ones that are responsible. The traffic problems on Hunter Road are well documented. There's no need to repeat them again. Uh, the atrocious condition of Bell Mill Road and its blind downhill curves and obtuse intersection with Hunter Road is well documented also. I continue to think that the number of houses on this plat be limited to the amount of buildable land, buildable land, without filling in the excessive acreage of this sinkhole ridden floodplain, which would be far less than the nearly 200 he proposed. Remember, there are over 16 acres in the floodway that can't be built upon. And then filling in the large 26 acres of land that's in the floodplain is not consistent with best practices laid out by governmental guidelines, but Hamlin County does not care about best practices. You'll hear more about this from another speaker. I request that you disapprove this plat and send him back to the drawing board, or even better, abandon the project. Thank you.
My name's Joe Dana. I live at 5810 Mountain Pass Drive in Utawah. And about 205, 206, 207, the federal government decided that all of the various, this balance was accounted to, should create, uh, better, you know, land use planning. I was the attorney for Walker County at that time. And I created the Walker County, uh, land use plan, creating subdivision regulations. And they're comparable to these. And I will tell you that the Walker County, Mr. Brawl said, Walker County has virtually the same, uh, regulations as you do in his comprehensive plan. And what you do is you fail to determine whether or not the property is detrimental to the public, safety, health, or welfare. You just let that go. That ain't your problem. You know why? Because you want subdivisions. You want to, you want to grant as many subdivisions as possible. And that is not your job. Your job is to look at each piece of property and, and study and give due diligence to determine whether or not it is, uh, acceptable. Now, I, oh, I've sat in here and listened to you guys saying, well, it meets all the zoning requirements. We don't have any choice. Bam, next, approved. Let's not write. Uh, I, I, I only have two avenues of choice. Number one are the courts. And number two is to look at the flood insurance program. They will be passing out to you. And I have spoken to Adrian Sheldon, federal insurance and mitigation director at FEMA. I've also spoken to Patrick Sheehan, PCS director for Tennessee. They, uh, I've given each of you a letter. I want to read it into the record. As a resident of the Hamilton County, Tennessee, I formally request an investigation of the management and enforcement of the national flood insurance program requirements by Tennessee. Hamilton County has systemically failed to administer and enforce the floodplain requirements of the national flood insurance program. In fact, Hamlin County appears to be encouraging the development of flood-prone areas without regard for flood negative consequences. Neither the planning commission nor Hamilton County provide consistent, effective leadership to manage Hamilton County's flood-prone areas. Subdivisions, developments, and variances appear to be approved without regard for the consequences of flood-prone areas. Just one example of Hamilton County's failure to prevent negative consequences to flood-prone areas can be seen on the enclosed plat of Nature's Cove, which was unanimously approved while, without any, without any substantial questions or discussion by the planning commission. A thorough investigation would have revealed that the property is unsuitable for development. Appropriate due diligence would have shown that exceptional large bend in Wolf Teever Creek results in flash flooding, which causes the creek to rise extremely fast, which floods a substantial part of the land shown on the plat. How far and how much floodwater is a question Hamilton County cannot answer. Furthermore, it appears that any substantial rain, rainfall results in flash flooding on a frequent basis. The abnormal amount of water rising at excessive speed compounded by development upstream and downstream makes this land very questionable for development. I encourage you, I encourage you to look at this property. I encourage you to have your attorney read some of the cases in other counties where you, where they look at more than approval of the substance, of the subdivision regulations, where they look at whether it is, it is desirable for the county or not. I encourage you to look hard, get your county attorney to do some research, and I believe you'll find that this property is not suitable for subdividing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Time for opposition is up. Sorry, sir. The full nine minutes has been used.
Oh, you gotta give me a minute, a minute anyway.
I don't have to give you a minute.
Well.
I said before we started that the time was strictly kept to nine minutes. And in this case, we actually had.
I mean, you could give me one minute, couldn't you? I mean, I, I, my property borders the majority of this development across the creek.
I'll give you one minute.
Okay. My name's Joe Jolly. Uh, I live at 8336 Bell Mill Road off Snow Hill. It borders across the creek and the majority of this development. Uh, I own the old, the old Griss Mill that is at the end of Bell Mill Road. Uh, the old Griss Mill is, is in the 90-degree bend of, of Wolf Teever Creek that the majority of this floodway that goes into this property, uh, is, is in. Teever floods, uh, it's a raging river down through there. And the way this 90-degree bend works, and you see it on your map, the majority of that floodway is, is right in that bend. It's, uh, you know, Wolf Teever is one of our four biggest waterways in our county. But, uh, my property and the old Harmon Farm have, uh, a lot of sinkholes in it. And when the floodwaters recede, uh, it looks like a bathtub drain going into sinkholes. I mean, uh, there's, I've, I've helped Mr. Barnes pull cows out of those sinkholes before. There's, uh, they're, they're that big. I, I am not opposed to development. I built houses for 40 years. We built quality homes. I would like to see quality homes continue to be built. I'm not opposed, but filling in 26 acres in the floodplain is way too much. It'll put more water on me and my neighbors. And, uh, I, I really think they ought to redraw it. If they get back off the creek a little bit, I'm all for it. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a builder myself, but filling in that much on the floodplain, it's just, it's just not right. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mike Price, MAP engineers. I think now after 19 minutes, I have yet to hear from opposition anything that changes our opinion in that we do meet the regulations and requirements. And other than a few disparaging comments about myself, I would ask that you would approve this proposal as submitted. If there's any questions, happy to answer. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Councilman Lefter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has TDEC taken a look at this and made the decision, Mr. Price?
TDEC has approved this plan.
TDEC's looked at this and approved it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question, I guess, for staff. And for the benefit of the audience, I think. In, in Hamilton County, who's responsible for enforcing FEMA regulations?
Uh, I think it's Hamilton County, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, Hamilton County water quality or building engineering?
Building inspection there are floodplain administrator, but it is, it is under Public Works, but it's in the building. Uh, the floodplain administrators that are building inspection director.
And this is a preliminary plat?
Correct.
That will not be recorded?
Correct.
Final plat after all of these?
That is correct. Next steps, you know, once this is approved, you said then the developer will move into submitting civil engineering plans, more engineering detailed study for land disturbing permits, making sure they're elevating above the base flood elevation. In, in Hamilton County, you can develop in the floodplain, can't in the floodway, floodplain, you can, as long as you elevate above base flood.
And not allowed to be determined by the Public Works Department, whichever subset, uh, building inspection?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Thanks.
And if I did, I'll follow up on a statement. So, so we're, we're regulated by FEMA, we're audited by FEMA. In fact, I believe, um, if I'm not mistaken, we were probably audited here in the last couple of months. So I, so I do have, in reading the letter, and I don't want to ask it here, but, but you know, you do make the statement that we, that Hamilton County systematically failed to administer and enforce the floodplain requirements of, uh, the national flood insurance program. So I would, I would request, maybe, maybe you send that information to Hamilton County relative to, to systematic failure. Uh, we do administer those floodplain, um, requirements based on FEMA, based on, um, our regulations that are required by FEMA. So, um, and we do take that seriously. There are, um, requirements related to floodway impact. Uh, those are all regulated by FEMA and we go through a process anytime there is any type of impact with the floodway. We also have some regulations that are approved by FEMA that are required by FEMA relative to how you impact the floodplain. And there are, um, um, many developments, um, that, that, or building and/or development that impact the floodplain. And there are certain regulations that are, uh, required by FEMA in administering those that we, we follow. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I, I was just asking that about the statement of systematically failed, but, but we, we deal with FEMA, we have conversations with FEMA, so I would. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Having heard from the opposition staff and some opportunity for questions and comments, what's the will of the planning commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And just for the record, Mr. Anderson wasn't present for that vote. Thank you. Next case on the agenda is SD 2024-0043. It's preliminary plat for Davidson Meadows subdivision lots 1 through 95 and a community lots 96 through 98 located at 7680 Davidson Road. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and a question?
Yes, sir.
I need a second on that motion. Thank you.
Brian, the rezoning of this property was a few years back. And is the developer in present this afternoon or engineers? Okay. We did quite a bit of repairs on Davidson Road. I'm just going to put this in the record at planning commission because I won't have an opportunity past this. And I'm going to ask the city to watch very carefully the condition of Davidson Road. It took us almost 20 years to rebuild and repave that road. And, uh, I, I would like to see some sort of, um, effort in maintaining its condition for the public. It was a very strenuous and stressful prod, process to get it done. And I, and when we rezoned this, it hadn't been done. It has been done since. So I, I plead and, and beg and to, for the city and also the engineers to take special consideration of that particular road when, when starting this project. So, thank you.
We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Did you get that? Next case is SD 2024-0044. And it's a variance on Sloan Road located at 929 Horn Road. And has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? Okay. And is the applicant present? All right, Mr. Schultz?
Sure. This is a variance request, uh, in the county, uh, to divide this property into two lots off a private road, uh, in the county, uh, to have every lot must run a public road or private road built to county standards or over five acres. Uh, these lots are less than five acres. They're roughly a little less than half an acre in size. The applicant's asking for a variance to that section to be able to cut, uh, two half acre tracks along a private road. Staff looked at this. We've approved similar, or recommended approval of similar request. Staff looked at this, we've approved similar or recommended approval of similar request. If you look at the, uh, location here, here's Horn Road, which is private. Uh, it doesn't go anywhere else, could not be further extended. Uh, property to the south and east has already been developed. No further subdivision could occur along Horn Road. So staff recommends to approve this variance request to create two lots less than five acres on a private road at this location.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right, sir, if you'd like to speak, come on up.
All that I ask is, uh, when they're developing, developing, uh, that, uh, if they do any damage to the road, did they repair it? Could we have to repair our own road down through theirs?
On Horn Road?
Yes, sir.
Well, I, I want to make sure we don't say anything incorrectly. I think Horn Road, based on what Mr. Schultz just said, is a private road. And, um, I don't know that anybody here or the, or the city would have the ability to hold the developer of that property accountable to fixing that road. So, um, I'm assuming you share that road?
Yes, sir. Um, I live dangly across from the property.
Have you spoken with the, the applicant?
I have not seen him or the person that.
Yeah. I think that's a valid concern, but not one that would be the oversight of the planning commission or the county because it's, or the city, I'm sorry. County because it's a private road.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We do have a name here of the property owner. This, um, Brooks Sloan. It's on the application. You might try to get ahold of them and get some more clarification on how that's going to be handled. What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is a subdivision plat, S D twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-four-five. This preliminary plat for Scenic Ridge subdivision lots three through fifteen. Located at twenty-seven zero-six Dodds Avenue and twenty-seven sixty-seven East Twenty-Eighth Street. And has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is S D twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-four-six. This is a preliminary plat. Pinewood Town Homes lots one through thirty-three. Located at seventy-four forty and seventy-four forty-eight Pinewood Drive. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is item six on our agenda, S D twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-four-seven. This preliminary plat for Char Glenn subdivision lots one through fourteen. Located eleven eight fifteen Dolly Pond Road. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And next case on our agenda is S D twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-four-eight. This preliminary plat for Coffee Tree subdivision lots one through one-eighty-three. And this is located at one thousand one and one thousand three, an addressed property on Middle Valley Road. And has staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Byrd recused. Um, first and only case under Old Business is located at twenty-two-four dash zero-zero-five-five. This is located at seven-five-two-nine and seven-six-eleven Ziegler Road. And it's a special permit for residential planned unit development. Staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request. Is there any opposition present? All right. And the applicant's present? Are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to hear from Mr. Schultz on this first, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Sure. Yes. This case was deferred last month, uh, for, uh, some revisions to the site plan or PUD plan, if you will. Uh, again, this is not a zoning case. This is a special permit for planned unit development. Uh, proposed use is single unit, uh, and multi-unit attached residential. Uh, if you look at the, it's about twelve, almost roughly thirteen acres, uh, fifty-one, uh, lots doing H P R development. Uh, it's four glen use per acre, roughly equals. So look at the, there's been no zoning history on this piece of property. However, to the last of this site on Cannondale Loop, uh, it was a R-one PUD for a single family detached development. And then a joiner road seventeen-ten and seventeen-twenty joiner road. That was rezoned from R-one to R T Z in twenty-sixteen. So there has been some history of zoning in this area, but not on this particular piece of property. Uh, currently it's a single-family dwelling. You can see Ziegler Road to the south, uh, to the north of this property, single, the, single unit detached. Uh, to the west of this property, single unit detached. Under the south is single unit detached residential. And to the east is vacant. And if you go farther east, you have single unit detached. Here's a view of the site. Another view of the site. This is north of the site, some of the single-family dwellings. This is south of the site. This is Ziegler Road. This is west of the site. And again, another view of Ziegler Road. Uh, this property is in the, uh, uh, East Brainerd area of eleven. Plan was adopted in twenty-twenty-two. Uh, the place type recommendation is suburban residential. Primary uses within this plan is single unit detached. It does allow secondary uses townhomes, uh, with limited massing of two to four units. Here's a closer view of that place type recommendation, which is again suburban residential. And the land use plan that has secondary use criteria that we reviewed to see what a recommendation would be, such as like eight questions. Uh, one is proposed use located within a quarter of a mile of transit stop. Uh, the answer to that question would be no. Uh, is the proposed use located a quarter of a mile of a Parker School? In this case, the answer is, you can know the school is probably two miles to the north. Is the property located on A Street? Uh, no, Ziegler Road was a B Street. Uh, is the proposed use located on a corner lot? Well, it's partially located on a corner lot, but Ziegler Road turns to the south. Sort of dead ends. Is proposed use similar to those on the same block and both sides of the street? Uh, no, as you saw on the land use map, everything abutting this property is single unit detached. Uh, there's no multi-unit attached along Ziegler Road. Is proposed building height within one story of those on the same block and both sides of the street? And answer that would be yes. And then due to the size, due to the use size, parking access, hours of operation, lighting, noise, truck traffic, do these pose concerns? Uh, staff said if approved, you know, we recommend a landscape buffer as a condition to address some compatibility concerns. And then finally, question number eight, is the use part of an overall plan development that consists predominantly of the primary use in this place type? Well, the primary use in this place type is single family. Uh, the answer to that would be no, because this request is multi-unit, uh, attached dwellings. Here's the site plan, or actually PUD plan that was submitted with this request. Um, you see there's one access point off Ziegler Road. And to the right, you see this large gray driveway going back to another single-family home. We go here, it's probably easier to see. That this property is creating two lots, actually three lots. One lot would be where the development's proposed. The area highlighted in the yellow would be a remaining single-family dwelling. And to the right of that is another lot, the third lot, which is to be used as open space. You access that open space by way of pedestrian access easement. Well, lots two and three, which is the single-family dwelling and the open space, they front an open ri- unopened right-of-way, which is Ziegler Road. They do not front a public road, which is required in the C H Chattanooga zoning code. We reviewed this, uh, last month and same this month as well. There's some questions that came up. Uh, as you see on the sub, uh, site plan or PUD plan, uh, doesn't show any stormwater facilities. They're not required to be shown. But if they are required to put in stormwater facilities, some of these units, they have to shift around. And when you shift those, that may be a major plan that would come back for this body. Uh, we just made the applicant aware of that. You know, if, if you're not showing stormwater, there could be some changes here that may impact you coming back to this body to, um, as a major PUD change. There was also concerns about the entrance, the corner of Ziegler, uh, that red circle. Uh, the original PUD plan had the entrance closer to that part of Ziegler going south. C dot had concerns with that. It was too close to that diagonal turn to the south. They moved it closer to the west on Ziegler. So that concern has been resolved by C dot. They're, they're fine with this entrance the way it is. So staff looked at it again. Uh, again, detached housing units were shifted closer towards adjacent single-family dwellings, which makes detached multi-unit housing less compatible with the surrounding, uh, predominantly low-intensity single-family dwellings. Again, the PUD layout shifts the multi-unit housing close to the southwest corner of the site, increases density along those, um, single-family dwellings. Attached housing, we inter- introduced a new development form on Ziegler Road. Uh, the biggest issue to staff, when I say staff, it's not just R P A staff, it's C dot, uh, Public Works, uh, other departments involved. Uh, the proposed single unit detached residential lot and open space lot are being created that do not have lot frontage on a public road. They do front a public right-of-way, but they don't front a public road. And you see section thirty-eight twenty-five of the Chattanooga zoning code, very bottom. Every, every residential lot hereafter constructed, erected or structurally altered shall be located on a lot fronting a public street. Go back. Lots two and three on here do not front a public, uh, maintained street. They're public right-of-way. No street exists. And number five, we reviewed this last month. We didn't see access to the community space or open space. That has since been resolved by way of a pedestrian access easement. So in the day, staff looked at this. Uh, the request is not compatible adopted area eleven plan, uh, is not compatible adjacent land uses and development form along Ziegler Road. We do have a concern, uh, with two lots being created that do not front a public street or maintained street. So staff recommends to deny this request.
Mr. Schultz. Sir?
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Gary O'Brien. I am, excuse me, uh, regional civil leader for LaBella Associates in Nashville. I'm pinch hitting for Caitlin Sims and Mike Flanagan, who would ordinarily be here, there, both out of pocket. And, uh, so asked me to step in. So I, I, I've been briefed and I, I understand everything about the, the history of the project and I'm happy to try to answer any questions. I would point out that, uh, we, uh, met with neighbors, uh, uh, back in the fall, I believe it was. I don't remember the exact date, but, and we presented a, uh, basically an R-one plan, seventy-five-hundred square foot lots, fifty, fifty residential lots, single-family detached. And, uh, basically it was going to be taking up the entire property, uh, trees removed, you know, clear cutting. Um, it would have met the zoning code, the, the use as, as prescribed in the area eleven plan. Uh, but again, it would have basically cut down every tree on the site. Um, we also showed, we showed the residents that plan. Then we also showed them a version of our, the current, uh, PUD plan. And to a person, they were all in favor of the PUD plan. They liked that much better because we were leaving trees in place. We were not disturbing that open area on to the east. Uh, so, you know, that was, that was a, a large factor in, in us deciding to go the way we went. Um, as far as the other questions, uh, the, the questions about Ziegler Road, yeah, that's, and, and the access point, that's been, uh, discussed with C dot and, you know, we have agreed to, it's a hundred, we, they wanted at least fifty feet from Bush Road if we were going to do a different, separate access. So it's currently shown at about a hundred and thirty-eight feet west of Bush Road. So we, we addressed that con- that, that concern. Uh, again, we're, we're providing buffering around the entire property where it's, where there are existing trees. We're trying to leave existing trees. We will leave, leave existing trees. Uh, I think our, my client has stated that, you know, if, if we need to supplement in some locations, they can do that. But I, I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have. I can, I can talk about access. I guess we are providing a, an access easement over to the open space, uh, while, while those two lots necessarily have frontage, I guess, on, on a public way. Uh, I think that the scenario that's, as shown addresses those concerns and provides access, uh, to those two lots. So I would hope that that would address that concern, but I'm happy to answer any questions there may be.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Staff as well. You want to go first? Say put, we, we might have some questions for you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Brian, um, I'm in a bit of a pickle here because we have a PUD that is denied by R P A. But for once is wanted by these folks who live around it. Because the option to build by right is not what they want. We have looked at both options. Uh, I am aware that there was even a vote by the neighborhood in the meeting to, to, to go with this plan versus what is allowed by right, uh, which would constitute claiming most of the land, obviously, and destruction of the trees. So I'm in a bit of a situation. If you could help me understand, if you had a landscape buffer, because you did say if it was approved, you would recommend a landscape buffer. In this, this is a new site plan from what we saw originally. And, and I saw this last week and asked a lot of questions over it. So do you see a landscape buffer built into this site plan? And for those of you following along don't know, uh, site plans are connected to a PUD, so this is really important at this level. Um, do you see enough landscape buffer that would warrant that to be satisfied from R P A?
Um, based on this site plan, it's hard to see. I don't see a landscape buffer shown that will dash to white line you see around the perimeter of the property. That's the twenty-five-foot PUD set pack.
Okay.
I don't see a landscape buffer.
Okay. Then I appreciate that. If you were to see a landscape buffer, what type would it be that you would, R P A might, might recommend?
Uh, we have staff.
A?
I would say A is thirty-foot.
I, I would think A too. Um, in going to C dot, we have a abandoned, or is it, it's not abandoned, it's open? Is that, you're saying Ziegler Road continues on through?
Well, there's a right-of-way there. There's actually no pavement there.
No, I, I'm, we are very well, well aware of the, the no, no pavement there. And I don't think anybody wants to see pavement there. Um, is that, would, would that be better if that right-of-way was abandoned? Would that, would that help?
No, because I think you still have those two lots, even if you ban, they still would not front a public maintained road.
Still not front, okay. Um.
I mean, one option.
Yeah.
Is the group all this is one big lot.
We have a floodway over there too.
Yeah. I mean, you can make all this one large lot, but that's not ideal for their clients.
It's not ideal for the, the people who live there either, I promise you.
So I mean.
They don't want that. Um, down the street on Ziegler Road, we have townhomes that are built as an H P R, I believe. That recently was in the news and something that we're working on on a separate project. So I, we, we do ki- I think, kind of have precedence there. Um, because that address does share the Ziegler Road address. If, if I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. Um, townhomes on Ziegler Road.
The one I believe you're talking about was further, almost towards Gun Barrel.
More towards Gun Barrel.
Yeah. I'm, I'm aware, I'm aware of those. It's other issues with that one, but I'm, that's, I think we're talking the same one.
Yeah, that's a whole nother. Believe me, I've, um,
Trample up on the map.
Fielding phone calls on that this morning.
I don't think the map goes that far, the ma- it's right here with the Z is.
Yeah, okay. So the, the question I'm going to ask, I guess I'm going to shift over here to Gary. Is Gary, um, given what R P A, and I really want to make sure R P A has as much as possible, uh, addressed their concerns, knowing that the, the citizens, the people who live around there have gathered, communicated and prefer this more tightly compacted, um, version than sprawling it out and, and leveling all those trees to make a by-right situation. Do you think there is room or your client would, Chairman will love this, take another swing at this and go back to the drawing board and address some of the concerns now that we have a revised site plan? Maybe try to go in and figure out some of the other concerns of R P A?
Being the two lots that don't front.
I don't know if we're going to be able to address that one.
That, I feel like we've addressed.
I, I am interested in the landscape.
The buffer, I, I can tell you that, I mean, they're, they're willing to do a buffer to.
So if you were to have a condition placed as a, and type A landscape buffer, you would accept that condition today?
Thirty feet? I would say that there was one comment about, uh, the, the units being shifted toward the, the, uh, single-family residential. And the stormwater design, I mean, if anything, you know, we will, we would probably shift the, the units away from. We, we're not going to ship them closer to the, uh, when we do the stormwater. We, we're not gonna ship them closer to the, uh, when we do the stormwater design. So that, obviously, that's not something that we do, so.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. That was my next note was to addressing the stormwater, because I think that's, we do like to see those, uh, at least referenced on the site plan. Um, knowing that that site plan can ultimately change as we move into council sphere. So, um, if you wanna, I'm glad you addressed that as well. Someone just drop, jumped up, looked like they might want to address.
Robbie Robinson?
Yeah.
Yep. Fourteen sixteen McCully Avenue. Um, this site plan was designed in a way so that if there is any movement of the townhomes, it would be going in away from the neighboring properties. So, and they have looked at stormwater, they just haven't done a full design yet. So they're considering it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It, it actually does make sense for all, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Just, just real quick to add on the, I would say that because the floodplain being down to the, the east, that entire site flows that way.
Right.
So water's not gonna, water's naturally gonna move this way. So our stormwater system's gonna start kind of on the east side and west side and run eastward. We're not gonna be dumping water toward the east. Just, so our system will go that way and not, not toward the.
Understood, and that's, we're getting into the.
Right, yeah, yeah, I just, I'm trying to help visualize, I guess.
I just wanted to share that because I think it's important that when we have a conflict in, 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 in opinions, um, you know, my job is to represent what's legal and what's under the zoning laws and my constituents, and they have, they have come together and I, and I, I knew this one was going to be difficult. But it's very fascinating to see the level of communication that has gone on, that they actually think this is better than what you could legally do. And, um, so I have to kinda, I have to lean into that. So I want, I know the chairman has some questions, so I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schultz, the base underlying zoning is R1?
Correct, yes.
And, um, does R1 allow for multiple units on one parcel?
No, because it's the PUD, the PUD wheel.
So with the flood, they can have, and they have the number of units that are currently.
Five max, and they're, they're at, I don't remember the actual number, four point nine, four point five, something like that. They're under the five.
Oh, so they're under a, a total density?
Yeah.
calculation. Gotcha.
Oh, they also, and I failed to mention, uh, back when they submitted, back in, I guess, April, there was two conditions that they, uh, applicants submitted. A developer utilized the first driveway entrance on Ziegler Road for construction traffic. In condition number two, the developer will install signs to prevent construction traffic on Bush Road, which is the one that goes to the south. I failed to mention those conditions they proposed last month.
So if we approved the PUD, at some point, they're gonna come back before us with, uh, plat, or, or I guess they wouldn't really have to come before planning commission with a plat?
They're gonna, yes, they, they won't, I guess, subdivide this into three lots. They would have to come for this body because those two lots don't front a public road.
Right, and then what happens at that juncture?
If it's denied, I don't, there's no way to create the three lots here.
So you're saying, at the point that they go to subdivide this into those three pieces of property, the applicant's gonna bring, um, a plat before this body and staff.
They'll have to go in front of Board of Appeals. That goes in front of Board of Appeals for lot frontage. If that is approved by that body, then that plat would come for this body. But if Board of Appeals doesn't approve that variance, they'd have to redraw some way. Those two lots get lot frontage on Ziegler or Bush.
So it goes to Bozo first?
Yes. No longer comes to this body because it's in the zoning code.
They ask for a variance, it either gets approved and comes here, or it gets denied, and it doesn't come here.
Correct. So if the plat would have come in like normal, trained in our office review and said, hey, lots two and three, I don't see how you have road frontage. Show us your old frontage. Then you go to Board of Appeals to be the option, what's your hardship? What, you're, you're self-imposing your hardship.
Right, so then, you know, when we do a PUD, we've got a certain boundary for that PUD, and, um, it could potentially then require modification or something like that.
Yeah, that was, that was our concern.
So we wouldn't be approving this subdivision? Just making sure we're all on the same page. We would just be approving PUD today, if we approved anything at all.
Correct. It doesn't, there's still steps in terms of getting building permits, plating, still hurdles to go through, uh, but we just have to point it out. As, as it's shown on this PUD plan, those two lots do not meet the zoning code.
Do you feel like y'all have a good handle on all these issues that have been brought up?
We do.
Okay. You want us to approve this PUD is what you want?
That is.
Even having heard everything that you've heard.
That's our request.
Mr. Lao?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm looking at this plan and the units per acre that the PUD is calculating is a total acreage. Yeah, there's also a plan that's being shown to subdivide and put new property lines. So then the piece of property that remains for these units, they're more closer to ten units per acre. And then now there's two additional pieces of property. What's the likelihood that the other pieces of property end up with ten, something closer to ten units per acre in five, six, however many years that those got sold? What's, it, the way that that road sort of doglegs out there makes me feel like there's a potential for multiple phases to this. I'm just asking, is there a mechanism or a way that, you know, I, I recognize that the PUD means it's gonna be what is presented as the PUD, but I, I just wonder, does the community end up losing those trees in ten years anyways?
Yeah, eh, eh, right. The PUD does control, if they wanted to add additional units beyond what's on this PUD plan, that's approved by City Council, that'd be a major change, come back for this body. Uh, the acres or densities calculated on the gross acreage, that's why you have those bigger two lots, two and three, if you will, to get that number under the five units per acre.
So the, the, the PUD plan is the entire plan?
Yes, as you're seeing on the screen.
The whole boundary of that, all three pieces of property?
Yes.
That we're, that we're looking at?
That's correct.
Okay.
I would just add to that, I mean, the lot lines between the three lots are internal lot lines. The, the PUD is the entire property. Yeah, any, if you wanted to change anything in the open space, that would come back. It would be a, a major change. So it's, it's not like they can do it without coming back and getting approval. Uh, it's, so it, it is approved as, as the whole. It's all the lots.
Thank you. Mr. Berg?
Just to clarify, you said the road frontage requirement is in the zoning code, not the subdivision regulations?
That's correct.
And?
There's thirty-eight on the screen there. I'm gonna go, that's where all your frontage comes from, zoning code, not subdivision rates. It's thirty-eight twenty-five, uh, of Chattanooga zoning regulations.
Thank you. Councilman Ledford?
Okay, great questions, thank you. Chairman really led me down a path here to wonder, um, I wanna ask this and reiterate this question to you. Are you sure you want to go to Bozo with this? Because there are five hardships that they will use, as you all know, and okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, given that this is something that, uh, the community has spoken in favor of versus what could be, I'm going to make a motion to approve. But I'm going to add a third condition, that a type A landscape buffer be added in, and, uh, with that, I'm gonna wish you all the luck.
So we have a motion and a second. And in regards to the condition, that type A landscape buffer would normally be required around the entire perimeter of the PUD plan, or is it just under, around a certain portion of the?
That's what I have to ask.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. So let's go, um, you'll help me out here along the western, western and southern.
Could I?
Yeah.
What I would recommend is we should supplement with the type A buffer in the areas where we don't already have existing ground, I mean, trees. I thought, we don't wanna take out existing large.
I don't want you taking out any trees you don't have to.
So where those are already in place and the buffering is adequate.
Understood.
I would recommend not.
How would that?
Well.
Brian, how would that look for you?
I, well, for me, I'm, I can write any way you want. Correct me to write. The problem is that LDO has to enforce this. How can they enforce? I mean, I wanna make it simple and easy for them to enforce whatever this body or council comes up with. Often it's easier just to state along the southern or western property line, except for clearing grading or whatever you need to do in that.
You could say that and say, except in areas where existing.
Exceeds thirty feet?
Something to that effect.
I, I'm okay with that. That, that actually makes sense. And I will have a talk with LDO meantime before this comes to council and make sure I can tighten up that language if we need to. I can do it at, at the council level.
From, that's along the western and southern property lines?
For right now, yeah, yeah, thank you. All right.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Um, I'm confident that, uh, what has been said, um, all the comments, all the problems and the difficulties can be overcome. But I, I guess I'm preaching. I go back to what the community is saying. And the community is all for this, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, miss.
Where are they? They're not here.
They're not here.
Oh, thank you.
Oftentimes, Mr. Chair, if I may, oftentimes when we have, have developed that conversation with the community, um, it is, it is deemed that, that is what has been accepted, and they don't show up in opposition. They don't take time off of work and come down here and support something that has been, uh, communicated and developed over several meetings. So, but that might be why.
Just one other question. Mr. Brown, you're from Nashville?
Yes, sir.
Anybody from Chattanooga?
Yes.
That's all I need.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're on all the new business section of our agenda, and item one under new business is case twenty-two-four dash zero zero six one. And this is located at fifteen two oh four Slap Town Road. And it's a special permit for a single-wide manufactured home, and staff is recommended to approve this permit. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case, twenty-two-four dash zero zero six three is at an unaddressed property in the four hundred block of Shannon Drive, and this is an application rezoned from R2 to R1. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Yes, can we? Yes, sir.
See a, a blow up to this map. It's only showing. Just curious what this area looks like.
It's, uh, this is an unusual case. This is a R1 subdivision, but it's zoned R2, sorry, it's a R2 subdivision. It's all single-family detached. This property owner owns, what you see on the screen, five or five properties in the same subdivision. He wishes to downzone these, uh, to R1, uh, to pretty much allow single-family detached dwellings. Doesn't mean somebody can't buy these properties in the future and be zoned back to R2. Uh, the area on the screen, he owns all these and wishes to, has a desire to downzone to R1. But this is primarily the single-family detached, um, subdivision.
Interesting.
And they're all vacant lots.
Mr. Anderson?
Is the applicant here? I, I have a question for the applicant.
I think we already have a motion and it was seconded, wasn't it? I lost my train. I think it was, we had a motion, it was seconded. I, I'd find for the applicant to come up.
If we've had a second, I think discussion's appropriate still.
Yeah.
We'd like to ask the applicant why he's doing this because single-family detached is allowed in R2, uh, so no rezone is needed to build houses. Please come to the podium, sir.
I guess my, my understanding, as this R2 is, is, exists, uh, this allows development, uh, like a, for instance, a duplex or a double-wide trailer. Uh, is that my correct?
If I may, well, double-wide trailers allowed in any zone, and R2, you can do a duplex, it's a special permit.
Okay, right, right. So anyway, my intention, I live in the neighborhood. My family's on that property, these lots for thirty-five years. My dad's passed away. He's on the property with, with me. Of course, I'm, I'm the older now. I'm looking at getting rid of these things. I wanna protect my interest in the neighborhood by zoning down to R1 to prevent, for instance, a duplex or any other type of development, other than how the, uh, subdivision was originally planned. The reason that I'm here for the zoning thing is the, uh, the subdivision restrictions have, have expired. So it's just the only thing, the only thing guiding the development of the property is what's, what, what the zone does. So I'm, we'll go back to R1.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
Nothing else. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, um, case twenty-two-four dash zero zero six four, located at four three zero six Blarney Lane. Staff's application to rezone from R2 to R1. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? We have opposition. Who's in opposition? Oh, okay, thank you. Come on up. Oh, you want it. You're. Got you. So okay. So in regards to case twenty-two-four dash zero zero six four, and then twenty-two-four dash zero zero six five, and twenty, twenty-four dash zero zero six six, and twenty-two-four dash zero six seven, is there any opposition present? And they are all the same applicant, right? And they are all for the same reasons. And so I'm gonna move through these as quickly as I can. We have no opposition. Is there any discussion on any of these where we wanna get some details? Planning commission, anything? Okay, so case twenty-two-four dash zero zero six four, what's the will? We have a staff recommendation to approve. What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve. Did I hear a second? And it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is twenty-two-four dash zero zero six five. We have a staff recommendation to approve. What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is twenty-two-four dash zero zero six six. We have a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, what's the will of the commission? We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is case twenty-two-four dash zero zero six seven. We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Sorry. And opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. All right, well, now that sets a new record for the fastest we've ever moved through seven separate zoning cases. Would it not have been possible for them to apply with one application?
It's multiple, multiple addresses, multiple properties.
Well, multiple addresses, we see all the time.
Yeah, because you put, you're gonna put conditions on some, deny some, it's easier for staff to do it.
Got you.
Separate. Only do it on the touch or buddy each other.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Well, thank you for being here. Um, next case, we're on item seven in our agenda. It's case twenty-two-four dash zero zero six eight, and this is located at twenty-seven zero eight Bliss Avenue. And it's an application to rezone from M1 to R1. Is there any opposition present? Here in opposition from rezoning from M1 to R1? Okay. And is the applicant present? On item seven, case twenty-two-four dash zero zero six eight, twenty-seven zero eight Bliss Avenue, is the applicant present? All right, Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, this is twenty-two-four sixty-eight. This is a request downzone, a rezone from M1 manufacturing zone to R1 residential. Uh, proposed use is a single-unit residential dwelling. Um, it's zero point three five acres in size. Proposed units, it'd be one. That's a density of two point eight five dwellings per acre. Uh, looking at the zoning map, everything to the north, south, east, and west is zoned M1. Uh, this property at one point had a single-family dwelling on it. That dwelling has been torn down and demolished, uh, because they demolished the stru- because they demolished the structure, there's no grandfather protection, they have to go back in of the current zoning, which is M1. M1 does not allow for single family dwellings. Here's a view of the property, it's about 655 feet to the north of Appling Street. To the north is single unit residential, to the south is property is vacant, to the east is vacant, and to the west is single unit residential. So in this general location of Bliss Avenue, there really is no manufacturing use. To get further south, you have some outdoor storage near this property to the south. This property is in the flood hazard area, again, the darker blue is the flood hazard area, flood plain, you can develop in flood plain as long as you elevate. The darker grayish blue is the 500 year flood plain, we don't regulate the 500 year flood plain. Here's a view of the site, you see there used to be a slab for a single family dwelling on this property. Another view of the site. This is north of the site, which is a single family dwelling. South of the site, again, that big blue building to the south is the outdoor storage area, which is on the M1. This is west of the site. This is Bliss Avenue. This property is in the historic river ridge plan, the place type is industrial hybrid. Primary uses being industrial, nonnoxious, light industrial uses. It does allow secondary uses such as multi-unit residential, retail and commercial uses. It's also because of the flood plain, it has a natural resources overlay on it because it's sensitive to those flood plains. You can see on the screen, the closer view of the place type recommendation. This is the site plan we received the application, you see it's just putting back a single family dwelling on this property. The quest is partially compatible adopted area three plan, and it would be compatible adjacent uses as those are single family dwellings along Bliss Avenue. Reason on this property allowed the continued use or allow a residential structure to be built on this property, which was there before. So staff recommends to approve the rezoning of this property to R1 or single family dwelling.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. One quick question I do have, you know, there was a single family house on the property before it was zoned M1, and so if one of the adjacent properties, you know, developed a plan to develop the property as M1, they might not have had any buffering requirements or anything like that, that would now be triggered by having an R1 property in the middle of an M1 zone. I mean, if there's no redevelopment, then it's a non-issue.
Yeah, it could. And one of the things people looked at through the new zoning code as well, and I think Darian's in her office, she's gone out and looked at, we have a lot of these requests over the years I've been here of rezonings in manufacturing areas where they have homes on it. So we've looked at going back in some of these areas and actually doing the zoning study to downzone some of those to allow the continued use or even reuse of some of these properties for single family dwellings. Yeah, it's like a big massive zoning study, if you will.
Sure. Yes.
And, sorry if you you mentioned this, but
Go back.
Where is Benton Avenue in relation to Bliss?
It's just to the southeast, you see on the screen here.
Okay.
It was zoned RTZ.
Okay.
That was 2023, we had a huge discussion on that one too, I think they wanted to put four, uh, four units or three units on that property, the plan recommend industrial hybrid, but everything around that property was the same scenario, it was all single family. I didn't hear you say, yeah, it is.
Alright, we'll hear from those of you here that are here in opposition and wish to speak.
Like, sir, James Partain on 2710, 12 and 14. My uncle on 276, which is on the other side of vacant lot that he's talking about. That property has no driveway. There's no way to put a driveway, the road drops off about that far down to the property. We all live at the bottom of the thumb, you know what happens at the end of the thumb? All the water goes that way. The only way he can get a driveway in there is to fill in from that road down to that property, which will drive all the water over on my property on 2710 side where residential house is set. The gentleman bought this place offline, never went and looked at it to start with. He kind of got like a pig in a poth, they told him, you can see part of the driveway on the right hand side. That belongs to my uncle on the street 706. They told him that was his driveway. When he come in to tear that down, he took down a private property, no trespassing, chain link across that driveway and allowed trucks to come in there and book the upstairs on my uncle's property and proceeded to tear the property up and just cause a mess. And when you try to talk to him, he's just, he's going to do what he wants to do, he's hard-headed, you can't do nothing. And we're just in, the neighbors around me, I know they're not here anymore. But they're, they're just not in favor of rebuilding, they should go just throw extra water on everybody when he builds that driveway. He can't come in from the backside. That is protected swamp land off of Citico Creek, so he can't build through there. So there's just nowhere for him to put a driveway unless he elevates and he pushes it all over on either side.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the opposition? Thank you, sir. Did you want to speak as well? Okay, thank you.
I'm Janice Gooden, 2125 in Lima Drive. This happened to be the Neighborhood Association president. This area was in my boundaries until I found it. I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Partain, Councilwoman Noel, and I visited the area. So we're deferring to Mr. Partain since he's most familiar. But we also found that there is a church, Greater Love and Christ Ministries. We met with Pastor Sarah Lott, she wasn't aware of the rezoning. So they don't really have an opinion at this stage. So we're just deferring to the residents that are closest to the zoning case. Just wanted to make you aware of that, Councilwoman Noel, and I did visit.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Murphy.
So Brian, help me out here. There was a house here until just recently.
Yeah, I don't know if he's living in the wall, there was a house there, there was a house there, the applicant, I assume bought it and then he was such bad shape, tore it down and moved everything off the property once he did that. Wasn't grandfathered anymore. And so lost power more than 100 days, so it's all that, so it burns back to M1.
So in M1 and the adjacent property, could be built a giant building of industrial or manufacturing. So
It could.
You could concrete the whole thing.
It could, I mean, these are very relatively narrow lots.
I mean, we're gonna, I want to make sure we're clear, because if we're gonna play hypotheticals, I want to say this is the reality. If someone was looking for cheap land in District Eight to build a plant, they could concrete that entire lot.
Anything allowed in M1, M1's pretty permissive zone.
They could put in loud industrial equipment, they could put in a chicken plant, they could put in.
Anything that's
Anything that's allowed in manufacturing.
Yes, anything, M1 again, it's a very permissive zone, except for single, sub-residential.
Okay, and the reason I guess I'm bringing that up is because from an M1 to an R1 is probably the most dramatic downzone you'll ever see. I mean, the most dramatic, and it's usually a, a thank you hallelujah moment from a manufacturing facility to an R1, and there used to be a house there. I just want to, I might want to make sure I understand that correctly. That it is now, it could be a very loud and large complex full of parking lots and cars and employees and three shifts and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, under M1.
And here's, here's, on the screen's a site plan.
Oh, and outdoor storage.
It says existing house, I'm not sure if that is the, what was there before, if it's a new house, wasn't clear on the site plan, but again, it's, it's a 53 foot wide lot, it's a very deep lot, so it meets the lot size. In frontage, it'd be grandfathered lot or a lot of record, if you will. And how he gets his driveway in there, you'd have to put a driveway on his property, couldn't put on this student's property.
Obviously, yes. Okay, I just want to make sure I understood what we were looking at in this, in this downzone. Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Sheriff.
Any other questions or comments?
So, so is Bliss Avenue, is it, is it a city street, do you know?
It is.
Okay. And you can't really tell.
I may have some
You can't really tell relative to existing property, thank you.
So will the commission?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for being here. And, and it will be heard at council, you saw those dates, and then there's a handout, it'll be at council.
I think June 11th, at 3:30.
Next case on the agenda is item eight, it's case 2024-0069, and this is located at 5575 Cassandra Smith Road, and it's an application rezoned from R1 to R3. And staff is recommended to deny the applicant's request and approve other. Is there any?
I think the applicant, the applicant's here, she wishes, I think, to defer for 60 days. In the day, we're recommending not to rezone the entire property, but rezone a portion of it, and they will make sure that the cell tower's in the right location before they move forward, since it's a partial rezoning.
Thank you.
Move to defer 60 days.
We have a motion to defer for 60 days and has been properly seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda is case, it's item nine on our agenda, it's mandatory referral 2024-0070, and this is located at the 3300 and 3600 block of Coward Street. And it's a street right of way closure, and staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, I have to recuse myself as a vote.
Mr. Law recused himself. Next case on the agenda is mandatory referral 2024-0072, and this is located at 400 block of North Holt's Claw Avenue. And it's for sewer easement abandonment, staff is recommended to approve, is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded, any discussion?
Brian, just, just to double check maybe when it goes to, to city council, the, the abandonment of sewer is on a previously abandoned right of way that actually goes through. It's correct, if you look at the, at the plat that was submitted, but that's not the area with the sewer easement. It's, it's actually, go, go one more. Go one more. See that line, see that easement that goes through the existing commercial building?
This one here.
That's it. There was a road that was there that went through, that went through a city abandonment. The city council abandoned the right of way, but they kept rights for sewer. And so this is a request to abandon those sewer rights.
Right, right.
But
But that, so, so you're saying that picture's wrong there on the screen?
That's, that picture's wrong, go to the plat. Back up, the, 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 where the highlight dot is, that's the area that has the sewer rights.
Okay.
So just confirm that, make sure that's appropriate.
Well, we, we reached out to Colleen Wash, and also was it clear, was there sewer line there, it's like something that happened back
There is, well, I mean, you'll need to double check with the city of Channing also, but there is no sewer line.
There's no sewer line.
There's a, there's a building there.
Yeah. Because we were trying to figure out, why does it even come before the body, but I think the applicants wanted to have it all cleaned up.
Well, I can tell you, there's, there was a road that was abandoned, but the gas easement was left, no gas line. The sewer easement rights were left, no sewer line. And the power board rights were left, no, no electrical service. And you can't get clean title too, he's probably has an easement.
We'll just change it on the map, make sure it's correct.
What's the will of the commission? Oh, have we? Thank you, sorry. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is 2024-0073, and this is located at 10156 East Brainerd Road, and it's an application to amend conditions from resolution number 1120-38B, staff is recommended to deny applicant's request and approve other, is there any opposition present? Mr. Schultz?
Sure, this is case 2024-73, this is a request to amend conditions, it's not a rezoning request, it's already rezoned. But proposed use back during the original rezoning in 2020 was a car, boat and RV storage area, you see on the screen. It's located at the corner of East Brainerd and Cherokee Valley. Again, it's silent, rezoned from A1 to partial C2 in 2020 with conditions. There were four conditions, proposed use only of the storage and selling of landscape materials consisting of mulch, topsoil, topsoil, compost and similar. Site restricted to one entrance exit to be located off Cherokee Valley Road. Number three, site to be limited to one sign to be located near the intersection of East Brainerd Road and Cherokee Valley. No sign being no larger than three foot by six foot. And finally, condition number four, a split rail fence with a minimum height of 42 inches to be installed and maintained along Cherokee Valley Road. The applicant's wishing to amend condition number one, which is to change the use to use of only parking and storage of cars, boats and RVs. They requested no change to two, three and four, so again, this is a request to only amend condition number one. Here's a view of the sites currently vacant, to the north is agriculture uses, to the west is single unit, and to the east is agriculture uses. There are some natural resources flood hazard area on this property. Here's a view of the site. Another view of the site, this is Cherokee Valley Road, East Brainerd intersection. This is north of the site. This is east of the site. East Brainerd Road looking towards the site, right hand side. This is in the Wild Oak Mountain area of 12 Plan, which adopted 2019. The place type recommendation at that time was conservation based residential agriculture uses, encourage conservation based subdivisions, but the county commission rezoned it to C2, they set a new policy in this area, if you will. The commercial was appropriate at this location. So staff, again, is not looking to rezonate, but looking to lifting conditions, so staff recommended to deny the applicant's request. Recommends to approve changing or lifting of condition number, sorry, amending condition number one. Keeping condition number two the same. Keeping, keeping condition number three the same. Changing condition number four to state a 20 foot top B landscape buffer is required along East Brainerd Road with exception of ingress and egress. And then adding condition number five, the first 20 foot of a driveway approach shall be concrete or asphalt. Gravel would be prohibited. So again, staff recommends to lift condition number, sorry, amend condition number one. No change to condition two or three. Amend condition four and add condition five to this request.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mike Price, MAP Engineers, we accept staff conditioned number five. I would point out hours that relates to number four, that there's a stream and a stream buffer along East Brainerd Road. So by default, you have landscaping and we can't get in there and plant anyway because it's supposed to be left undisturbed. So I would just ask that condition number four be stricken in its entirety, but approve the other four conditions.
Thank you, any questions for the applicant?
Can you bring that site plan back up, I'm sorry, I had one further, I apologize for staff.
This one here.
We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case is 2024-0074, and this is located at 1709 North Orchard Knob Avenue. Sitting an application rezoned from R2 to M3, and staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Alright, and is the applicant present? Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, this is 2024-74, a request to rezone this property from R2 to M3 warehouse wholesale zone. Proposed use is Warehouse wholesale zone, proposed use is warehouse and office use. Acres of this property is zero point three eight. M three to the right or the east of this property is the same developer here. To the north is R one, to the west is R one, to the south is R one. So this would be an extension of M three to this property. A portion of this site, which is the eastern eastern side, this property was rezoned to M three nineteen seventy six. The R two was rezoned in nineteen ninety nine with conditions. You see it's currently a vacant lot. And this property to the east is a warehouse and office use and to the west of this site, single unit residential. And to the south is single unit residential. Here's a view of the site from McCollie Street. The warehousing M three is just to the right. You can see that building there, which is the M three zone. It's a different view of the site that M three, that property there is the M three where that warehouse building is. This is an existing warehouse in North Orchard, Orchard Knob Avenue. This is a view north of the site, which is single family dwellings. This is south of the site. See a railroad track there. East of the site. This is west of the site. Now, this property is in the historic river to ridge plan, which is adopted in twenty twenty. The place type recommendation is industrial hybrid, which is non noxious, low intensity glass manufacturing uses. So the request would be compatible with the land use plan. Here's a closer view of that property. Again, it's industrial hybrid. Here's a site plan that's submitted with the application. You see they're going to expand warehousing, landscape buffer, abutting this existing R one to the west. So the request with conditions is compatible with area three plan. It would be compatible adjacent land uses and development form along North Orchard Knob Avenue. That is the extension of existing zone. Staff recommends a condition of a landscape buffer to provide protection to that single family home to the west. So staff recommends approve with one condition. A thirty foot top A landscape buffer to be provided along the western property line to eighteen oh one McCollie Street, which is tax map one thirty six K C thirty two, which is shown on the site plan.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? Mr. Jones.
Good afternoon. Alan Jones of Stone Creek Consulting. Wometh Road, Dunlap, Tennessee. So this project, so the whole property is fenced in and it's split zoned right now between M three and an R two. And the the property owner came to me asking about getting a land disturbance permit to get some of these additional storage units constructed and informed him that he's got a little bit of R two on the property, which he wasn't aware of. So the whole property that's within the fenced area has been kind of basically taxed and utilized as a commercial property over the years. We're looking to bring that up to conformity. Part of the project goals of this, Brian, if you don't mind showing the site plan, is to add six kind of warehouse office style units, six of them. With the success and of the recent construction construction career center that's just north of this site. It's, you know, the developer and the land and the property owner, they're trying to find a way to help startup trade companies be able to store their materials, store their equipment in their trucks safely. And also while giving them an address and giving them some office space. So these are thirty five by twenty kind of warehouse office spaces to help the trades community out as they're looking for getting a new business started. With R P A, we agree that we need a thirty foot landscape buffer, which is already shown on the plans preemptively. In addition, I've talked to the property owner and they're they're completely fine with having an additional condition that I'd recommend planning commission consider is that the hours of operation are limited to six AM to eight PM. I was talking with Mr. Ken Smith, who will be talking here in a minute. Just, you know, one of the concerns is just having traffic on in the residential neighborhood in the wee hours of the night. So limiting the hours of business would help solve some of those concerns. But I'll turn my time over. Back to you.
Thank you. If there's any opposition you wish to speak coming up?
Good afternoon. My name's Ken Smith. I am the president of the Avondale Neighborhood Association. Avondale Neighborhood Association owns property directly across the street from this project eighteen oh eighteen oh eight, eighteen oh six. And I don't think the other property has an address. It is most of that area was recently, currently zoned as R two for residential development. This change had us just a little bit concerned as to what the property owners across the street were planning to do. We did get a chance to talk to Mr. Allen. We have now better understanding of what they intend to do. And of course, like I said, we were anytime we have manufacturing residential connected to each other, we want to make sure that there's not like a conflict. This particular project. The only concern we have was they're going to be leasing out space to contractors. We wanted to make sure that we maintain a residential flavor for this community. And so we were just asking, we did have an agreement to limit some of the hours of operations to it. And of course, like I said, we plan to develop more residential directly across the street.
Thank you. You don't you don't want to say anything else, Mr. Jones? Okay. Any questions?
No questions. I'd like to make a motion though, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve with conditions, adding the condition of limited operating hours of six AM to eight PM.
We have a motion to approve with one staff condition and then another question, condition that's been added. And it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is mandatory referral twenty twenty four dash zero zero seven five. And this is in the nineteen hundred block of Central Avenue. And it's for a sewer easement abandonment and has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? Second, we have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is case twenty twenty four dash zero zero seven six. And this is located at six four, six seven. It'll walk Georgetown Road and it's a special permit for residential planned unit development. And has a staff recommendation to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? And the applicant is present. Mr. Schultz.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. We did receive one email and opposition as well. This is case twenty twenty four seventy six. This is a request for a special permit for a residential planned unit development. It's seven point seven acres in size, thirty five lots. It's a density of four point five dwelling inch per acre. Again, it's not a rezoning. It's already zoned R one. So looking at the zoning map, to the north is A one, south is A one, to the east is A one. And to the west, immediately abutting this site's R five, but you go across the interstate, I seventy five, that's commercial. But this property is owned R one. It was rezoned in two thousand and four from A one to R one. And at that time, it received a special permit for a PUD. However, that PUD, back then, it expired. We changed that, I think, at twenty eight, or sorry, two thousand and eight, where PUDs expired. But this was done well in advance of that. So this PUD never got developed and has since then expired. It's currently a vacant piece of property. To the north is vacant land and single unit residential. To the east, across Udoa Georgetown Road, a single unit residential along Hoppy Trail, that's single unit residential. And then the south is single unit residential, then abutting I seventy five right away to the west. Here's a view of the site. Another view of the site. This is Udoa Georgetown Road, site just on the right hand side of those trees. South of the site. East of the site with single family dwellings. It's Highawatha Estates, Hoppy Trail, going into that subdivision. Now, this is in the White Oak Mountain area plan, which is adopted in twenty nineteen. The primary place type recommendation is suburban residential. Primary uses are detached, single unit residential and residential subdivisions. Here's a closer view of that place type recommendation against suburban residential. Here's a view of the PUD plan submitted with the request. You see it's one entrance off Udoa Georgetown Road. There's a cul-de-sac going into the development. It's a density of seven, current zonings are one, seven acres in size. It's four point five eight, I think, was the density. The request with conditions would be compatible adopted area twelve plan. Staff recommends a landscape condition along Udoa Georgetown Road to offer consistent development pattern. So staff recommends to prove this PUD with two conditions. A top B twenty foot landscape buffer yard along Udoa Georgetown Road right away, excluding the points of access. We offered similar conditions along this section of Udoa Georgetown Road in the past. And a traffic impact study is required to be submitted by the applicant to Hamla County Development Services at the time of land disturbing permit phase. So staff recommends to prove this PUD with two conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Good afternoon again, Alan Jones. So this property is currently zoned R one, as Brian mentioned. And, you know, and we looked at a study of just doing the R one with the subdivision plat process. We can actually get thirty seven lots on this property. So but the request for the PUD is to help to basically to lengthen or shorten the amount of infrastructure that's needed to develop it and only do thirty five lots. So they're actually kind of, I mean, thirty five, thirty seven is basically the same number of lots. But the request is for the PUD. So I did hold a neighborhood meeting back on April twenty third. The majority of the of the residents that came out were from the Highawatha Estates subdivision, which is across the street from Udoa Georgetown Road. And, you know, one of the questions that one of the neighbors asked me is like, well, why do a PUD if you can just go and get a subdivision plat approved? Because, you know, it's, I think it's been pretty well stated that subdivision plots, as long as you meet the regs, we can get it approved. But the main points that we that I explained to the neighbors, it's so we can have a flexibility in lot size. So we can have flexibility in setbacks. We're actually providing a dedicated thirty percent open space. That's a combination of the open space and stormwater ponds. This creates a twenty five foot perimeter buffering to the surrounding neighbors. But additionally, as a, you know, kind of a financial incentive for the for the developers, it's going to help reduce and like the reduce the amount of road infrastructure we have to build in some of the infrastructure in an effort to try to keep some of the housing costs down. As far as the conditions from R P A, we are completely fine with the first condition. The second condition, I would, my recommendation is, there's been with all the future existing developments that are going along just north of here on Udoa Georgetown Road, the county has multiple traffic studies for for this road. We know exactly what the conditions are based on those previous traffic studies. And, you know, really, we know this is going to require a D cell lane. Commissioner Eversol was was at the county commission or at the neighborhood meeting with me. And he goes, you're going to have a D cell lane. So our request is to, to, you know, a traffic study is pretty much going to pay for the D cell lane. So our request is just to reward that condition that a D cell lane would be required on Long Udoa Georgetown Road. And instead of just giving the county yet another traffic study, which they know is what it's going to say.
Thank you. Mr. Lina.
Traffic studies should be easy if you know what it's going to say. I would only say that a D cell lane is not always appropriate, whether somebody recommends it or not. That's why you look at site distance, look at how you see traffic approaching with with a D cell. We're also concerned about about volume on a left turn lane. We're seeing a lot more requirements for left turn lanes on some of our higher volume roads. And so I would I would request that stay. Thank you.
You in opposition?
Yes, sir. I would just offer some friendly support as it relates to the traffic study. The staff and county currently only require traffic studies when there's fifty or more homes. So this would set a new precedent, which I think is dangerous. If fifty is the number, that's what we need to stick with. Thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
No, I'm not going to say anything. Okay.
All right, we have some opposition here. If you'd like to speak, coming up to the mic.
Good afternoon. Michael Harney, sixty five eighteen Highway Road. I am the current president of the Highawatha homeowners association. We've done some talking about this and one of the things that we've just gotten copies of is the T deck report for the wetlands on the site. There are two distinct areas that are either wet all the time or containing wetland wildlife and and plants. And so, you know, we, I thought it was the Wolf Teever Land Plan, but you have said it's the White Oak Mountain Plan. Recommends the preservation of wetlands, surface waters, and natural resources. And so if those situations exist, I think a twenty five foot setback around those wetlands are appropriate. And we should really consider that. Also, the deceleration lane. Udoa Georgetown Road at Highawatha Estates, trying to get out. There's ditch on both sides. And we already have an excessive amount of traffic on that road with the other subdivisions that are going in. I think an extra lane to be able to escape to, whether it be acceleration or deceleration, having the road a little wider in front of this new subdivision, I think would be a smart thing to consider. And I don't think that we have to have a another traffic study to to acknowledge that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Coulson, sixty five twenty two Highway Road in Udoa. We're right across the street in the Highawatha Estates area, as we talked about before. I have PhD in civil engineering and geology. And I have a tremendous amount of problems with a sinkhole that's on this property. Because I understand there are a lot of sinkholes around the whole area of Chattanooga. And the general approach is just to fill them in. Well, that's fine for the short term. And by the time the contractor is gone, the original owner is gone. Change in why they're there in the first place. So that process will remain. And it depends on how fast it is, how fast it's been. If you're looking at the map, you're six or seven on that road are where the sinkholes. Jurisdiction over this, but if they do build houses there, contracts should state that these homes will go to reexist in some place.
Sir. I am smart enough to know not to argue and debate with a civil with a PhD. So I won't I won't try to negate anything he said. You know, the the property owner has has been consulting with environmental engineers and also geotags. They are aware of the low spots and the wetlands on the site. And as with any development, they're going to go through the appropriate T deck permitting processes, you know, to to whether it's to mitigate or to leave on site. Obviously, if we can't develop on a, it is becomes a sinkhole, we can't put a home or a lot there, then we lose. Um obviously, if we can't develop on a, it's it it is becomes a sinkhole, we can't put a a home or a lot there, then we lose a lot. And and developers fully aware of of that situation. Um but I think um outside of that, I think we've uh, you know, we we meet all the other requirements um for for hitting the PUD. And just kind of echo back on 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 the traffic study. You know, we, I think the first gentleman mentioned, we we know what the traffic is. And and leaving up the um the discussions of the right of way improvements during the permitting process between between civil, between the the civil engineers and county staff.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Sir, we we hear the traffic concern and I understand that the time for public comment and opposition has ended. Um so I know, I appreciate you stating that. Anything for the applicant? What's the world of commission? Uh yeah, what's world of commission? Motion to approve with conditions and it has been seconded. Any discussion?
I I I mean, just just to be honest and and we can, we can have this debate. I um when when um the assumption is a D cell lane, when a a left turn northbound may be more appropriate. Or or not a D cell lane because of a site distance issue, I I think it's appropriate to go through a process. Uh I don't care how many lots are in the subdivision when you, when we start just assuming certain. Conditions without going through an appropriate process. I have no idea what that intersection looks like looking back to the north. I don't know what that volume is necessarily coming to south. I I I do like the site plan that's actually askew, which it should be ninety degrees. So I I my my motion's um traffic study. Thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case mandatory referral twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven seven. Is located at the eighteen hundred block of Allen Street and the thirty-three hundred block of North Hawthorne Street. And it's mandatory referral for an alley right of way closure. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present?
Hi, good afternoon. Hannah Clara with Chamberlain Spatter and Stoffel, six oh five Chestnut Street. Um the applicant is fine with the condition, but I do have a question for staff with respect to the timing. So assuming this goes before city council in June and is approved on first and second reading. But the property owner is not able to record the plat until after the meeting.
That's correct. Can I, we you could review and approve. We just couldn't sign and get it recorded until after council takes action, which would be.
Okay.
July.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion to approve with conditions. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven eight. And this is located at the nine hundred block of Riverfront Parkway. And it's an application to rezone from M one to B CX twelve, then commercial mixed use zone with conditions. And staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? And is the applicant present? And regarding the conditions? What's the world? We we have a motion to approve with conditions and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Anderson accused himself. We have a mandatory referral, case twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven nine. This is for the unopened. Uh three hundred block of East Manning Street and for a sh- street right of way closure. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's well, the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have. Next on our agenda, government mandatory referrals, and we have case twenty twenty-four dash zero zero six two. Located at forty-three forty-three Schelfer Road. Is there any opposition to the property acquisition request? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And the next case is twenty twenty-four dash zero zero seven one. And this is located at fifty-three zero nine hundred Road and three unaddressed properties in the eighty-six hundred block of Udoa Harrison Road. And it's a mandatory referral for surplus properties. Staff is recommended to defer until July eighth, twenty twenty-four. Is that right?
That's correct.
Is there any opposition on that?
I want to be clear that the the applicant requested that defer.
Gotcha. We have a motion to defer until July eighth, twenty twenty-four, and it was seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any staff updates?
I don't have any of this Dan or anybody else has.
Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Mr. Price? Uh can I get approval to planning commission minutes of April twenty twenty-four? We have a motion. And it was seconded to approve. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn. Thank you.